Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order, please. This is our regular council meeting, July twenty first, two thousand and sixteen. If you would, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation. Jack, do you want to give the invocation, please?
May we bow? Father, we just thank you for this evening, the right to assemble and talk about things that are important to all of us here in the city, our nation, and all the things that are going on around us. We ask for your guidance and we thank you so much for each and every day, all these things we pray in your name. Amen.
Amen. I'd like to welcome our guest and visitors here tonight. We have some special guests from Boy Scout Troop One Nineteen seated over here. Their scout leader is Dave Ryer, Ryer. Too many Rs there, I'm not Ryer. And we're glad to have you all here tonight, certainly. Okay. We have a proclamation, you know, I think it's very timely, quite honestly, with everything that seems to be going on in the world, that we have a proclamation, we've been asked to do this by an individual living in the city here. It's proclaims the city of, it proclaims Civility Month. And you know, there's never been any reason to be anything other than civil, even though we find ourselves there many times, I think, you know. But we should all respect one another and treat each other with respect and act accordingly, I think. So I'm going to read this proclamation. It says, "Whereas the concept of civility, as well as citizenship and peacefulness, embraces some of the deepest values and principles of all people and remains humanity's guiding inspiration. And whereas there is growing support within our city for the celebration and promotion of civility throughout our community, affirming our vision of the world at peace and fosters cooperation between individuals and organizations. And whereas civility encourages that common courtesy be shown to each other in the form of pleasant greetings and gestures while demonstrating care and compassion for one another. And whereas civility encourages all of us to slow down our own frantic pace of life, to listen and converse with one another more intently with unconditional positive regard for each other as human beings. And whereas when events and times are difficult, that we summon the assistance of friends, faith advisors, and/or health professionals to help us work through our issues for the betterment of ourselves and humanity as a whole. And where civility can assist us in reaching consensus with issues and allow for mutually respectful, ongoing relationships which will uplift our daily life and make a pleasant community within which we live. I therefore, Gene Hart, good mayor of the city of Canton, do hereby proclaim August two thousand and sixteen as Civility Month in the city of Canton." Okay. Are there any public announcements? Ms. McGrew, you have anything?
I don't.
Anyone else? Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Slow move.
Are there any changes to be made? Anyone know? Okay. We have a motion, Mr. Goodwin, second by Mr. Yon. All in favor, seeing the five of saying aye. Pose no. All members voting for the motion. In your agenda package, you have the minutes from the meeting of July seventh, as well as the September twenty fourth special called council meetings. Are there any changes or corrections to be made to those? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve those.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Just on the September twenty fourth meeting, the minutes, it says twenty fifteen. It should be twenty sixteen.
Oh, absolutely. No, actually, it is twenty fifteen.
It should say August.
They never actually got approved.
Oh, last minute, last year's Minnesota were never approved. Okay.
That was a set that never, for some reason, got officially approved.
Okay, thanks. I was.
That's right. It did look odd, didn't it? Okay. So we have a motion, a second, to approve those minutes. All in favor, signify, saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no. All members voting for the motion. Okay, we're now to our ten-minute public input period. And we have someone, Kirk Cooper? Oh, you're going to wait. Okay, that's fine. You'll wait till the issue comes up. That's fine. Under old business, we have the consideration to adopt Cherokee County's Cood District's school safety zone for the Cherokee Elementary and High Schools. Mr. Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Thomas Weaver. I reside at one thirty-one Old Marietta Road here in Canton, Georgia. I bring before you today, based upon a request that I had submitted to the office of the city clerk, a request, an item on the agenda for the council's consideration and potential favorable consideration for the adoption of the Cherokee High School's school safety zone map, along with the Canton Elementary School's safety zone map. Just some legislative history behind my request. Back in November sixth, two thousand and fourteen, this council approved unanimously each and every school safety zone map that was forwarded to the city by the school district. However, based upon some requests and concerns that I had voiced with the city during the interim of the meeting that was held on the November sixth meeting versus the November twentieth meeting of that year, council chose by motion of Councilwoman McGrew, seconded by Councilmember Rust, who is not here, to delete from the consideration of the consent agenda the Cherokee High School slash Canton Elementary School's school safety zone map. My request for asking council to reconsider the issue and to adopt by resolution the school safety zone map as approved by the school districts timely, not only being by submitted through the office of the city clerk, but also because our children and grandchildren are preparing to go back to school here in ten days. This item will not burden the city in any way, shape, form, or fashion, and I don't expect the city to expend any amount of funds appropriating for this matter. And it will, however, augment public safety within the city. I would ask for your favorable consideration of this item, and I'll be happy to accept any comments or questions regarding this if the council should have any.
Anyone have a question, comments? Mr. Dyer, do you recall, you recall this, that we accepted that Cherokee High School school zone, I guess, back sometime back? And is there any reason we should not adopt this?
I had to ask Mr. Weaver what happened last year, or two years ago, whenever it was. I didn't remember why we didn't. I remember that there was an issue. But what I remember is I thought we should have done it then. So we have to have something. If the boundary's not right, we can tweak it and fix it. But it needs to be something.
Anyone else have a comment on it, question, anything? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I suggest that we look at that seriously for a vote at next month on that issue unless if there's not a desire to do so tonight. Okay. Item D, discussion and possible action on case AX sixteen oh five dash zero zero one, Lifestyle of Laurel Canyon, request annex three point three oh nine acres for a second entrance road. City manager Billy Peppers, community development director Ken Patton.
Mr. Mayor, council members of Brian Ponder with Southeast Capital notify me that their legal representation is caught in traffic and request that city council consider amending the agenda to move items B, C, D, and E until after item Q. And hopefully, legal representation can be here.
You want to repeat that, Ken? Can you do that?
Yes, sir. The Lifestyle Laurel Canyon, their legal representative is caught in traffic. Brian Ponder with Lifestyles has requested city council consider amending the agenda to move items B, C, D, and E to the back of the agenda after item Q prior to city manager's report.
After item Q, at the very end of the meeting, you said?
Yes, sir.
We have a request to amend the, actually, we already approved the agenda, but.
I think it's just postponing, oops, sorry, just postponing till a later time. I mean, you postpone within this meeting, I can't remember the word. It may not be postponed, but there's tabling, within the meeting, it's tabling, so.
Okay, we have a motion to do that?
Slow move.
We have a motion, Mr. Goodman, second by Ms. Wilson. Oh.
Legal counsel just walked in.
We've been waiting on you.
Out of the present.
Does anyone have a question? Okay, let's go back then, and item B. Does anyone have a question regarding item B?
This is the requested annexation for three point three oh nine acres to provide for the second entrance into the Laurel Canyon Development.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to annex.
Okay, we got, Ms. McGrew made the motion, Ms. Wilson seconded the motion. We have a motion to approve. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no. All members voting for the motion. Item C, discussion and possible action, case Z sixteen oh five dash zero zero one, Lifestyle of Laurel Canyon, request to re, to zone property from Cherokee County Agriculture to PD mixed use, planned development mixed use.
Motion to rezone.
We have a motion to rezone. Ms. McGrew made the motion, Mr. Goodman seconded it. Any other discussion or questions? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no. All members voting for the motion. Item D, discussion and possible action on request to abandon a portion of Laurel Canyon Parkway. Lifestyle of Laurel Canyon request to abandon four point four six seven acres or nineteen hundred and seventy-six linear feet. Have you seen one have any questions regarding that? I have a couple of questions on that. I would, I would suggest that we, I'm not sure whether this goes with D or E. Ms. Grant, you want to go ahead?
Yes, I think the question I asked in the work session was, how do we ensure the construction of the second entrance prior to the relocation of the gate? And I think we said we would do that with a performance bond, but I think we discussed putting a timeframe on that, within a certain period of time. Has that been addressed?
Yeah, I think when we did talk about that, we thought that would have been done with the annexation, was where you would have put the, well, performance bond will ensure that the road gets constructed. If you want the road constructed prior to the gate being moved, is that what you're doing?
I think just, just to ensure that the road is constructed.
The performance bond will ensure that it gets constructed.
And we have.
And that, that bond could have a deadline in it.
The performance bond generally, those are open ended until the construction is completed. But you can specify a time limit for a performance bond if you're so inclined to do so.
And there would, well, really, to make the performance bond workable, there needs to be a deadline, so that you could say the insurance company knows that you can now make a claim on it. So you would normally put that in there. So it would probably be appropriate for you to decide that deadline, so the staff would know what to put into the performance bond.
Mr. Goodman?
I think we talked about eighteen months. I don't know if that sticks in my mind.
Eighteen months was a maintenance bond. Once, once the road is complete, there would be a maintenance bond for the next eighteen months, once we had accepted and it had met all requirements of the city development standards. What kind of timeframe do we need to, what, what kind of timeframe are we looking at in constructing the actual roadway?
I would think, Mr. Ponder might be able to address, but I would think twelve months would be more than sufficient time.
Yes, sir, twelve months is fine.
Twelve months, I think, you know, if we just limited twelve months?
So what we'd need is just a motion to require as one of the conditions of the performance bond, that the road be constructed within twelve months.
But now, is that, is that under item D?
I think you'd have to go back and actually probably reopen item B for the annexation.
Okay, do we have a motion to reopen item B?
Slow moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Grant and Mr. Yon seconded the motion. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, that one, we're going back to that one, so at this point, I'll entertain a motion regarding the timeframe for the bond on that issue.
Yes, I move that we put a twelve months time limit on the performance bond for completion of the construction of the second entrance.
Twelve months from the permit.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. Twelve months from the permit.
Twelve months from the permit.
An amendment to the original motion, or is this a, would this be an amendment to the original motion for annexation, or is?
I think you can make a, I mean, it's the agenda item, I think we can do it as two motions without reopening. We don't have to undo the one we've already done.
Okay.
I think a second motion's, okay. I think a second motion's, okay.
Okay, we have the motion and the second. Mr. Goodman seconded the motion. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posse no. All members voting for the motion. Five, zero. Now, under D, the, the 4.467 acres, would it be possible, agreeable, to condition, to condition that on the gate not being closer than 250 feet to that intersection? And the reason, the reason I say that, it's not that I distrust anyone totally, it's just not totally anyway, but it's, it's, it's that if we annex in the entire street down to that intersection, and the gate, and, and, I'm sorry, if we abandon that road, roadway all the way to the intersection, then it's your roadway, and in the future, you could actually move it down closer to the intersection. Not that you would.
So we can do 250 feet back from the center line of the intersection, the intersection of.
Yeah.
Laurel Canyon.
The one that goes to the golf, golf clubhouse.
Correct, so 250 feet from that center line.
You don't have a problem with that?
We can make that work. We've measured it.
Okay, let's condition that as well on, on this one, but, let's see, is there any other discussion about that? About that issue? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve with the condition that it be 200, no, less than 250 feet from the center line of the street going to the golf course. Mr. Yawn made the motion, Ms. Wilson seconded. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posse no. All members voting for the motion. Item E, discussion and possible action on a request by Lifestyles Laurel Canyon to move the existing gate to a new location on Laurel Canyon Parkway. Anyone have any problem with that? Any questions, comments, motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve? Yes, Ms. McGrew made the motion, Mr. Grant seconded that motion. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor, signify by saying, I'm sorry.
Do we need to condition this, that they pave the abandoned roadway?
Right. I think that, you don't have a problem with paving the abandoned portion of the street prior to relocating the golf, the gate, gatehouse? Okay. That, the amendment, motion is amended and is seconded? Okay, all right, any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posse no. All members voting for the motion. Okay. Let me, let me make sure one thing is clear now. When, when y'all move the, the gate, y'all will be making sure that that golf cart path is, is available for people that won't, outside the gate, right? You know what I'm talking about, don't you? I can't remember the name of that street, but, okay. Okay, okay, good. Yeah, we want to make sure that happens. Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
There is some discussion about some stop signs that go at the end of the road as you're coming out from the golf course. I think that kind of issue would need to be taken up with the Home Owners Association and the Advisory Council. I don't think we have any jurisdiction over that, is that right?
No, I think we do, because that, those are both city streets.
Okay, well, we.
We're there talking about city streets.
We need a stop sign so that cars coming out into that intersection, as you're leaving the golf course, cars coming into that intersection would know to stop.
Well, Mr. Peppers and I have talked about that as recent as, I guess, today or yesterday, and, and we're going to make sure there's some stop signs there. Yeah. Anyone else on this issue? All right, item F, discussion and possible action on case MP 1601-001, The Grand Reserve at Canton LLC located along Reservoir Drive. Proposed master plan amendment for Pod H, Riverstone. Mr. Patton?
Yes, sir. This is a master plan amendment for Pod H at Riverstone. The Grand Reserve at Canton LLC was the applicant's sweetwater properties, is the property owner. The suggested conditions for this master plan amendment are, track one would consist of 24.832 acres would be approved for 149,793 square feet of commercial, 1,400, 149,783 square feet of office, with 141,890 square feet of residential, which would be above the commercial and office. This mixed-use concept with track one would be similar to Avalon over in Alpharetta. The additional mixed-use square footage is substituted in place of the 134 single-family residential units. Track two would consist of 20.55 acres, be 308 multiple-family units. It's a 1.504 acre increase with a density decrease of 1.17 dwelling units per acre. It's proposed move from the central portion to the northern portion. It's also suggested incorporate Mr. Benson Chambers' letter of April 18th, 2016 by reference. Sure, the proposed apartments would be market rate Class A and provide for the $75,000 escrow money for traffic signalization. All parking for Pod H shall be interior to the pod with the following exceptions. Track A, mixed-use pod of maximum of two rows of parking along Reservoir Drive, designed so that one driveway aisle shall be nearest to Reinhardt Parkway. Track two apartments, a maximum of one row of parallel parking along Reservoir Drive, maintenance of circular flow for fire protection. Buildings in mixed-use track one along Reservoir Drive, Reinhardt College Parkway, shall have storefront finishes along the road frontages. The apartment buildings in track two shall comply with the city's standard minimum of 51% brick or stone exterior facades. Provide a copy of the ingress egress easement between the apartment developer and the landowner of the adjacent tract, which is track one mixed use. One of two points of ingress egress shall be a shared entrance and is to be directly across from Hickory Log Drive, which is the entrance to Teasley Middle School. Maximum 308 apartment units. Submitted site plans conceptual in nature. 15-foot landscape buffer along the entire west and north property lines of Pod H. Buffer consists of Leyland Cypress or Arbivata planted in two staggered rows on 15-foot centers. Living space within the mixed-use area shall be located on a second floor or higher. Mechanical unit shall be screened and not visible from Reservoir Drive and Reinhardt College Parkway. Trash collection dumpsters, compactors, receptacles shall be screened and not visible from Reservoir Drive or Reinhardt College Parkway. Be a minimum of four access points with a minimum of two installed prior to the issuance of any certificates of occupancy.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any questions regarding that? Ms. McGrew? Mr. Grant, you want to go ahead?
Sure. I have three questions. Number one, if I understand correctly, so track one is now a combination of the two tracks, the commercial and then the, the other track that was going to be single-family?
That is correct.
Since they're combining those two tracks, did, did that go back before the planning commission, or does that have to go back before the planning commission?
No, not necessarily.
Okay. And then, developed in the style of, similar to Avalon, I like the sound of that. Is there, how will that be? How do we ensure that, or?
These suggested conditions with the commercial, with the office, with the residential above, and with the storefront look requirement would ensure that it's going to be a mixed-use development with retail and office, on the lower floors residential above, and it's going to have storefront looks. It'll have to go through a design review oversight committee, of which the mayor and I both are part of that oversight committee.
Okay, great. And then my third question, the apartments that are proposed are Class A, and I think we said in the last discussion that if these Class A departments were denied, there would be nothing to keep developer or another developer for, from developing Section A apartments?
I believe that the question was asked if this master plan amendment were to be denied and the existing master plan approval was in place, then the apartments, as the approval stands now, yes, that could be developed as income restricted or Section Eight housing.
Thank you.
Mr. Goodman? Do you have?
I'm sorry, I didn't hit my other button.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Patton, we had asked that there be no parking along Reservoir Drive, and I see that there's one lane of parallel parking on Reservoir Drive. Could you explain the need for that?
The applicant requested the allowance to provide for some parking between the buildings and Reservoir Drive, the parallel parking would not impact Reservoir Drive as far as headlights or that sort of thing. There would be traffic circulation availability for fire protection services.
Will there be any type of screening between the street and the parking?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Goodman?
Yes, Ms. McGrew asked pretty much the question I was considering. The conditions up there, once these are built, how about our fire department and the availability of getting our trucks through there? Are the drives wide enough? You know, we've had some problems with some of the other ones.
They will have to be, once the actual construction plans are submitted. The fire department is part of our construction plan review process, and they have the ability to deny the plans if their fire trucks cannot adequately go through any of the driveway areas.
One other question, I'm going to put you on the spot. Do you have any heartburn with any of this?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. McGrew?
Are the streets through the development going to be private, or will they be city streets?
I would have a tendency to think everything inside's going to be private.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I, I will say, in our discussions with the developer and, and their representatives, they've been very cooperative and have been willing to, to, to meet some of our requests without hesitation. I'll say that, they really have, so. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Goodman's made the motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Wilson seconded the motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posse no. All members voting for the motion. Thank you. Item G, discussion and possible act. I'm sorry.
Was that motion with the suggested conditions?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. It was just as you outlined, absolutely, absolutely.
I meant to say that, I'm sorry.
Okay. Item G, discussion and possible action on cases AX 1604-001 and Z 1604-001, Knox Bridge Highway, Butterworth Road, Mountain Oil Express, request to annex and rezone 5.28 acres to City GC. And I understand that the petitioner has requested that this be tabled until when?
They have requested city council table this until their August 18th, 2016 meeting. They want to do some additional engineering in regards to the suggested conditions that have been talked about by city council prior to a final decision to make sure that everything's going to work for the site.
Okay, Ms. McGrew?
My reservation about this property is it has a, an abandoned building on it. Will that be demolished right away?
It would be demolished prior to construction beginning or part of the construction process.
I have concerns about zoning in more blight.
The existing structures would come down.
Thank you.
As part of this project.
Okay, anyone else? If not, I'll entertain a motion, I guess, to approve the tabling of this motion, of this request, until the August 8th meeting. Mr. Yawn made the motion. Postponed, thank you, to the August 8th meeting. And Mr. Grant seconded that motion. 18th? Oh, the third meeting then?
Yes, sir.
Third Thursday, okay, August 18th meeting. All right, any other discussion or questions? If not, those in favor, signify by saying aye. Posse no.